Call the April meeting of the Atmex County Board of Supervisors to order. Please stand for the invocation by Mr. Carter, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heaven and father, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, there will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the blessings you have rendered unto each of us. Thank you, dear Lord, for our public safety. Thank you, dear Lord, for those people that are associated with public safety, the dedication and the service that they render to the citizens of Atmex County. We thank you for everything that you do, not only for the county, but what they do in raising the money funds and also other attributes that they bring to the county. We ask you to bless our public safety personnel. We ask that you keep us in your thoughts, give us wisdom. Thank you, dear Lord, for yesterday and what it means to each of us. Now, dear Lord, we ask that you be with us during the course of this meeting. The things we do and say will be in the best interest of the county. We ask this in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first we'll have setting of the agenda. If you've all had a chance to see the agenda, is there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, we'll take a motion to accept the agenda as published.
So moved.
Reverend Jones has made the motion to accept the agenda as published. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter, a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is set as published. First up is a budget work session. FY twenty, excuse me. FY 2026 library budget request. At the March 25th budget work session, the board finalized the budget for the advertisement. There was an outstanding request from the librarian for consideration prior to final adoption of the FY 26 budget. The request to be considered is $29,238 for two position changes, public service specialist to assistant library board director and reclassify a part-time library assistant to full-time youth service specialist. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Heekle, I'd like to make that motion. Put it in the form of a motion to approve.
Okay, Reverend Jones has made the motion that we approve the addition of $29,238 to the library budget to accommodate the two position changes listed. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter, second. Discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Weskill. Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye. I vote aye also. The library budget will be addition, we'll have an addition of $29,238 to cover the position change of public service specialist to assistant library director and reclassify the part-time library assistant to full-time youth service specialist.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on that?
Yes.
At our work session, the reason this was outstanding is there was a difference of $42,320. But as you recall, the librarian did request that 14,000 of her part-time monies be reduced. And so that brought a difference of the $29,238, which now you have a balanced budget with that. So if you make a motion with number two, then we'll need new funds.
All right, thank you, Ms. Adams. All right, number two. FY 2026 budget request from Southside Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program. VASAP. Mr. Roy Keith Lloyd, executive director of the Southside Virginia ASAP, met with Sheriff Richardson during a budget committee meeting. And it was communicated that Atmex County not received a funding request from the VSAP board. Per an email sent by Mr. Lloyd to the county administrator, discovered that the requests had been mailed to the wrong address. Attached is a copy of the requests for funding for our consideration. Staff recommends consideration of funding in the amount of $5,000 to the Southside Alcohol Safety and Action Program.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hips?
Ms. Adams, what is our habit on this through the years? Do we generally fund this?
This, this hasn't been requested.
Oh, this is the first time?
Mm-hmm. Years ago, I think they used to fund it when it was in Farmville. And then it relocated to Halifax. So this is the first request from the Halifax location.
Willie Craft used to serve for 150 years. Yeah.
And what's the desire of the board? Mr. Carter, what'd you say?
That we had a former board member, but they served only for years. I'll make a motion that we approve the expenditure of $5,000.
A second.
Okay, Mr. Carter has moved that we budget $5,000 for the Southside Virginia Alcohol Safety Program for FY 2026. Reverend Jones has given it a second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hips?
I know what VASAP is, but I don't exactly know what I'm approving here. I don't, I mean, I don't have, yeah.
Virginia Association.
Yes.
Alcohol Safety.
Yeah, Virginia Association. VA, didn't it?
Ms. Adams?
I know what, I know what VASAP is as far as people that need to do the classes and whatever.
Yeah, it's court-ordered services.
I mean, it's court-ordered, but I mean, who funds it? It's funded by localities?
It's funded by localities, and I'm not sure if they get any state funding or not. Is the sheriff here? He's on their budget. He might can address that, if he'd like going to.
Okay. Thank you.
Question for you, Mr. Chair.
The, the letters in here, I think it kind of explains it too.
So basically what this is, is each jurisdiction is giving amounts of money to help cover the cost, even though it is put in through the courts.
Ace. Hey, could you turn him off, please? I'm sorry. Thanks.
You know, it is mandated through the courts. They pay for stuff like the breathalyzer in the car, things of that nature. But right now, it's not self-sufficient without the localities pitching in some money.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just think it's strange if that's the case, why we haven't funded it in the past.
Well, I'm not sure what happened between that transition. They, they...
Yeah, so we used to be on the Farmville, and I just took office with this, this year. So it's been the first year they merged together. Because the Farmville one kind of, it's better off putting all the resources in one, because they didn't have enough for two. So they put it all in the once. And then unfortunately, they got three people doing all the work for two different localities now instead of two localities.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
If need be, Mr. Chairman, we can go back to the minutes, and I shall respond that we have, we have funded this before.
Not at the Halifax location.
No.
And it said four of the ASAP programs were closed, and their respective service areas were merged into other offices. So that, it's a new merger of those offices.
Got it, thank you.
Any other discussion? All righty, Mr. Weskill. Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So we'll add $5,000 to the budget to cover, to fund the Southside Virginia Alcohol Safety and Action Program. All right, next up is a citizens' public comment period. This time is provided by the board to allow citizens to, the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. And this is time you can speak on issues other than the public hearings that are coming up. Any citizens sign up to speak? Nope, no citizens, all right.
I want to know what the decision was made for the chap voting precinct. Is that on the screen somewhere?
As I recall, at the last board meeting, that was
She was supposed to research it. What? No, she was supposed to do the research at the church on 7/27.
Don't know anything about that, ma'am. All I know is that the, that issue is, was not put forward by the board.
So what does that mean? That means that Chap Bone Precinct is no longer going to be at Central Baptist Church? It's going to be at Spouse Spring Ruin?
No, that means that we took no action on it. So it means it's things stay as it is.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, appearances. These scheduled times are provided by the board to allow citizens and organizations outside the county government to discuss matters of importance with the board. Up first is Mr. Paul Denham, vice chair of Go Virginia Region Two, has requested to appear before the board to provide a Go Virginia presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us. We've got a quick presentation on Go Virginia. Don't know how familiar you are with the program. This is the Growth and Opportunity Fund, supported by the governor of Virginia. And it's split into regions. Appomattox County falls into Region Two, which I'm the vice chair of that, that council. Each year, we're allocated about $1.5 million from the governor's office to allocate for projects that are supporting economic development throughout the region. So Go Virginia's purpose is just that, is to support growth and opportunity around the Commonwealth. And it's, it's really geared towards promoting higher-income jobs and grant opportunities that can help a, a region grow. You can see in the map of Virginia, that Region Two encompasses the greater Lynchburg region with Appomattox, Amherst, Bedford, and Campbell County. And it encompasses the Roanoke Economic Development Region Planning District, and then the New River Valley. And that's all lumped into one. So we follow a growth and diversification plan. And that's in, we're, we're actually going through that cycle and right now of revising our growth and diversification plan. Here are some highlights of some upcoming meetings. There's actually one in this area on May 22nd that anyone who's interested is, is welcome to attend. This helps us plan for the future of where we should focus our efforts in, in both approval of grant applications or what, what would drive the economy forward for the Appomattox region. I mentioned the regional council. It's made up of 29 individuals from all three of those subregions. The, this, our subregion has nine members. So we're well represented on the council. Periodically, we have vacancies come open. So we would be open for nominees from Appomattox if there was any interested party in serving on the council. We always like having names in reserve. Here are the council members from our subregion. Obviously, myself, John Capps, Dr. John Capps with CVCC, Janice Crawford with Framatone, Whitney Silesniak with American Electric Power, Rich Didums representing Liberty University, Kaylee Eldery with Sunny Merriman, and Luke Toll's with Pinnacle Bank. So the region is, is, is well represented. We focus on target clusters. And this is something that will be revisited in the growth and diversity planning. So life sciences and biotechnology, transportation and autonomous manufacturing, IT engineering and emerging technology and materials and machinery manufacturing, all of which are well represented within the entire Region Two. And our goal is, is to support grants that either support workforce development in those traded sectors or in helping companies that would bring jobs to the, to the region grow that are within these traded clusters. And the target is to bring in higher-paid wage jobs in, in the region. So typically, that's one of the factors in evaluating grant applications that it will lead to those higher-paying jobs in some way. Our, you know, our core strategies are to, to grow economic opportunity. And it's by growing these clusters. And it, it can be through planning grants. It can be through implementation grants, where we're actually taking that planning and going one step further. It can also be in, in support of site readiness. Because if we want to bring in somebody from a manufacturer or an employer from outside, typically they're looking for either an existing building or an existing site that's, that is as close to pad-ready as possible. So the total impact to the region. So for all of Region Two, we've had 53 funded projects. We've funded $16.2 million in Go Virginia funds. We've also, to get those grants, we've been able to secure $17.9 million in matching funds. 831 jobs created or filled and 1,881 credentials awarded. And then you can see commensurately the impact in Appomattox County of nine funded projects. And these are oftentimes, we look for projects that are not just single county or single city. We're looking for collaboration between a, a region. Because very often, the economics cross jurisdictional borders. So we're looking for multi-government and multi-private employer support behind projects. But, but that represents 2.2 million in Go Virginia funds for the Appomattox County, 3.5 million in matching funds, 130 created jobs, and 1,194 credentials awarded.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Chairman. Mr. Carter?
Can you define what those projects are?
Yes, I've got a few of those as examples. Let me. So a couple of those projects, and again, remember, these are cross-jurisdictional. There was a, a project to, to help Amherst with some site readiness, where we funded, this project, I believe, is, is closed. But it, it, we've helped them move a couple of sites from one level to the next level of site readiness for development. We would love to see Appomattox come to us with a proposal in, in that regard. I don't think, I have Gemma Subicora, who's with Go Virginia Region Two is sponsored by the Virginia Tech Department of Economic and Community Development. So that's sort of our administrative support. We're run by the council, but they provide a lot of the backbone. They do all the work.
Mr. Denham?
Yes.
I think what Mr. Carter was getting at, as you say, that there was nine funded projects to, that impacted Atmex County. And I think Mr. Carter and myself would like to specifically know what these nine projects were and how did they impact Appomattox County.
So
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The, I can point to one project, which is the one in this building, the building out the welding lab for, with, in conjunction with CVCC. The others are joint collateral projects that may create jobs for people who choose to live in Appomattox, but work in, in another county.
So really, it should have been, you know, yeah, it's a little misleading. Based on what you just said.
Yes.
Atmex basically benefited from one project, and we may or could benefit from other projects.
There was one project where Appomattox was actually the applicant, was in Appomattox. But nine of our projects have had an impact on Appomattox County.
Okay, well, could, could you give us the, the meat of those impact on Atmex County?
Well, the way that the projects are reported on, it doesn't divide it up by localities. Because the emphasis of Go Virginia is to bring in cross-locality collaboration. So there's never just one locality impacted by a project. So we can't divide it up by exactly how many jobs.
So you had, you, basically, you have no data that, quantitative data is how Appomattox was impacted. You're just saying theoretically, Appomattox should have been impacted by these other projects. Because you have no quantitative data that actually.
There, there is no way for us to tell with the way we keep data to know how employees are commuting from Appomattox to another jurisdiction. That's absolutely correct. Similarly, this particular project with the welding school, the intent is to create certified welders who would work in, in the Appomattox County. But there's no way any of us can guarantee that we won't train some of those welders and they go work in Campbell County or Amherst County. And, and keeping those records is almost impossible for us. I, I think, to summarize, the theory behind Go Virginia is a rising tide rises all ships. That becomes harder for you as a board of supervisors, I understand, to go back to your voters and justify. But I'm a firm believer that if, if we increase economic activity in our region, we will increase economic benefit for everyone.
As a member of the Workforce Development Board, I agree.
And workforce development is a passion of mine. And several of the others, there's projects at Randolph College. The, the CVCC CTE Academy is another huge contributor. My company, Southern Air, is a huge beneficiary of this academy. We have over 100 state-sponsored apprentices in that academy right now. That is a tremendous benefit to our community and to Appomattox County. It's training people beyond welding. It's training in electrical plumbing, HVAC, industrial technologies. That's a fantastic asset that Go Virginia has helped fund. So real quick, we can get a link to you all. We would love to, the five-to-10-minute survey. I think you have a copy of the presentation. You can just click on that QR code. You can give us feedback. If you don't think Go Virginia is supporting Appomattox County directly, give us that feedback. If you have suggestions of how we can better support you, give us that feedback. Come to our Growth and Diversity Planning, even if it's just sending a representative. That would help us include. It's our job to give away the Commonwealth's money, and we want to do that in the best, in judicial manners we can.
Commonwealth money belongs to people sitting out there.
I understand. I agree 100%.
They put it in.
I'm, I'm fighting to make sure that, so there are three subregions. And, and I, I represent the entire council as vice chair. But I also keep score and make sure that subregion, our subregion gets its fair share. So that's our presentation. Any questions?
Any other questions for the board? Thank you.
We would love to see more proposals come from, from Appomattox County. And collaboration with local economic development authorities really help. It can be a significant driver in creating the, the cross-jurisdiction collaboration that Go Virginia needs. We have certain rules that we have to provide, authorize these grants relative to. And multi-county or city jurisdictions are, are part of that. So the EDA can help support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Mr. Robert Brown, VDOT Atmex resident administrator, has requested to appear before the board to present Atmex County's secondary road six-year plan for FY 2026 to 2031.
Yes, sir.
Unpaid road priority list from last year with the additional requests received throughout the last 12 months.
Right.
And it's recommended after your presentation, the board should consider scheduling public hearing on the VDOT six-year plan at the May meeting. Mr. Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I hope you've had a time, had an opportunity to, to look over the plan. It is very little small. I can remember a time when it was probably a dozen projects in this plan. But things have changed due to, mostly due to the funding string. And the fact that Appomattox County has fewer unpaid roads now than it ever has. And just for your information, currently, there are, there are 24.03 miles of unpaid road left in the county, which is pretty remarkable when you consider how many it was 25 to 30 years ago. It was, it's an awful lot. And we are pleased that that number is getting smaller. But the problem when that number gets small is our allocations get reduced due to the formula that we use for allocating funds. So if you look at the, the draft of the plan, there, there are really only three projects in this plan. And one of them is, 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 is currently under construction. The first half of Hancock Road is under construction. We, we, we expect to, to complete that this year. We are having to put some money on that project in FY 26 to complete that funding. And then you'll see the next project is Route 675 Cedar Bend Road. That has been on, that has been in the plan for years. And it's coming back up. And then the third project is the last section of Hancock Road, Route 644. And as you can see, it takes a while to get, to get, to get it funded. It's not going to be completely funded until really the last year of the plan, which is FY 31. But as you look across the top of that line, you see how much our allocations were cut from FY 25 to FY 26. It's pretty drastic. So, you know, the, the, the allocations are reducing, but we're still, you know, we, we're still building roads. But we just simply don't have the funding level to put as many projects as we've had in the past. You'll also see a line item for, for Appomattox County Water Transportation Services. These are your telefees. These are not designated unpaid road funds. These are telefees that, that VDOT receives from, from the communications lines that we get fees off of in Appomattox County. We, we have not, we have not designated that money to unpaid road projects simply because we use that money to do a lot of the little special things we do, like new signs and special projects on secondary roads that, that come up throughout the year. We can, we can pull some of that money into a project if we want to. But we like to keep it unobligated to handle the things that come up that are unexpected during the year. And when we have a little special project that the county would like for us to do, we can do it. So with that being said, there's not, there's not a lot to talk about here, folks. I'll be glad to entertain any questions as far as the draft of the plan that, that you may have.
Any questions from the supervisors? Carter, any question?
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's good to hear the report from Mr. Brown for the unpaid roads and all. That's finally getting there. That's finally getting there over the years.
Okay, if I don't have any questions about the draft, the next document you have is a list of the priority list for future unpaid road projects. This is a list that we keep for the county. And we record roads where your constituents have requested that their roads be paved. Right now, there are no priorities set on this list. But this is simply a list that we keep. And to be quite frankly, we don't need to prioritize this list this year unless you all desire to do so. If you want to set some priorities on this list, that is fine. But we do not need to set priorities because we're not adding any projects to the plan this year. And to be quite frankly, we may need to add a project next year, but that's not essential. So I'll leave it up to you. If you want to, if you have a project or route on this list that you want to prioritize, you're certainly welcome to do so. I will enter it and keep this list for you. And when you set this priority, if the board agrees, when we need a project to go into the six-year plan, I'll pull it off this list based on what you have instructed me to do. So that's your choice.
Mr. Chairman. So that I don't get any angry phone calls, I will at least say that both Snap Mill and Maury, is it pronounced Maury? Maury, Maury?
Maury.
Maury?
Yes.
She called me, but it's not my district, so I think she ended up calling you. But either way, she was quite passionate. So I'll just mention that, well, Snap Mill is mine, but I'll mention that that, of course, has my support. And I'll say that Maury Place does too. That's.
Yes, definitely. Yeah, Maury Place would be a priority for me. Very impassioned constituent. Has been communicating back and forth with me.
So Mr. Hips, are you making that a motion that the board set those priorities?
Sure. I'd move that Snap Mill and Maury Place be set as priorities for the next project.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
All right. Hearing none, the motions are made to make Maury Place and Snap Mill's Road priorities for addition to the six-year plan when an opening comes available. Is that the way we put that?
That will be fine, Chairman. I would recommend we do Maury Place first. Because it's relatively short road, it's inexpensive. And we could also work that in the plan at the same time with Snap's Mill. If we put Snap's Mill first, Maury Place would not go into the plan for quite a while.
I'll revise the motion to set the priority Maury Place first and then Snap's Mill.
Okay. And I'll second that amendment.
Okay, so amendment's been made and accepted by the amendment, or by the motion makers, Mr. Hips and seconded by Reverend Jones, that Maury Place be priority number one. Snap's Mill Road be number two. Any other discussion?
Who is number three, Mr. Chairman? Is it Bellevue?
We didn't make a three. We just made a one and two. Is there a third you want to put on there?
Oh, yes. We need to put Bellevue. Traffic count is 60. And I believe Reverend Jones, this was your area?
Was set.
Is that right?
I didn't hear you say it.
Oh, Bellevue Road.
I'm not sure.
Bellevue.
Yeah.
Mr. Hips, did you accept an amendment to add a third place to your motion?
Sure.
Reverend Jones?
Anybody? Any others?
All right, amended, amended, amended. Motion is to rustic, rural rustic priority list draft that number one be Maury Place, number two be Snap's Mills, and number three be Bellevue Road. Mr. Willskill? Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye.
I vote aye also. All righty, and is there a motion to set the public hearing for the six-year plan, FY 2026 to 2031 at the May Florida Supervisors Meeting? Mr. Willskill's made the motion to set the public hearing?
Second.
Mr. Carter seconded? Discussion? All right, motion was made and seconded to authorize staff to advertise public hearing on Monday, May 19, 2025, at 6:00 PM for the review of the VDOT six-year plan. Mr. Willskill?
Aye.
Mr. Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye.
I vote aye also. I guess we'll see you on the 21st, or the 19th, huh?
Yes, sir.
Or don't you go to the public hearings?
Well, I may have to have one of my systems.
Okay, next up, we have Mr. Jonathan Garrett, Fire Chief for App Magnics Volunteer Fire Department. Has requested to appear before the board to discuss Virginia Department Fire Programs PPE grant that the fire department has been awarded and request the board's consideration to authorize county administrator to sign the award acceptance certificate. Mr. Garrett will also provide an update on the purchase of the new ladder truck for the fire department. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for allowing me to be here tonight. So the Fire Programs Grant was a collaborative effort from Ms. McCormick, Ms. Adams, and myself, where we worked with the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and the Virginia Fire Services Board to help us replace out-of-date personal protective equipment. So we were fortunate enough to receive $14,000 of grant money from the state. It's pass-through money, it doesn't require a match. So it's, 100% of it can go to us. It comes from the state to the county, to us, to pay for this PPE going forward. So it's, basically that translates to not quite four sets of turnout gear for our members. And it has to be replaced every 10 years. Going forward, next year, we're going to replace more gear. We're working with the Virginia Fire Services Board, they know what we need. And we're also going to work with Pamplin to make sure that that's a collaborative effort with them next year when the state has earmarked more money. So we can help them out as well with their personal protective equipment. So I appreciate Ms. McCormick helping me through that and Ms. Adams for helping me with that as well. But if you've got any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer those. But that's specific about that Fire Programs Grant. That's something new that the state decided to do to help localities offset the cost of turnout gear. And they actually increased the budget going forward to, they saw that the need was much higher than what they expected. So, any questions on that?
Any questions on the fire equipment turnout?
One comment on that, Mr. Chair, is at a later meeting, once the award has been finalized, you will be appropriating the funds that's basically pass-through from the county to the fire department.
But we do need to make a motion to authorize you to sign, right?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
All right, Mr. Willskill's made the motion to authorize county administrator to sign the grant acceptance. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter's made a second? Discussion? Mr. Willskill?
Aye.
Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Madam Administrator, you may certify the grant.
Thank you all.
And what's the next step?
So moving next, provide you with a little bit of an update for the new ladder truck. We're still planning on taking delivery of that sometime in May, most likely. They said late April, beginning of May, so we're looking at probably the beginning of May. They've made some of the upgrades to it that we asked them to do. And it has now gone to the paint booth to be painted to match our scheme to our current fire apparatus. So making good progress in terms of that. We'll go down and do an inspection prior to taking delivery of it, make sure everything meets our expectations. And then they'll actually deliver it to us, so it doesn't add any mileage to the truck. And we'll take delivery. We've already got some training on the book scheduled to train on the new apparatus that's coming in that was funded training from the Department of Fire Programs. So we're able to score two funded trainings to help get our crews trained properly on this piece of equipment, make sure that they're sufficiently trained to operate it. Part of that segues into the next piece of what I'm about to talk to you about. And I want to preface what I'm about to say by saying that we are completely committed to our obligation to the county. But we've hit a little bit of a roadblock, if you will, in terms of selling our old fire apparatus. So just to give a little bit of a backstory refresher, at the end of 2024, the county graciously agreed to support us for a loan to fund the purchase of this used fire apparatus. Part of our repayment strategy was to sell our existing ladder truck and help offset the debt directly to the county. Since the time that we've had this discussion, we've marketed this truck through social media that we use locally and on a, two worldwide fire apparatus professional brokers. Despite our best efforts, there's been no serious interest in this truck. We've talked to Buckingham, who had to prioritize some other projects. And then we've had some pretty in-depth conversations with our neighbors up the road in Concord. Concord has shown some interest, expressed interest in this truck. But as it stands, without the sale of this vehicle, we're concerned about our ability to meet our repayment obligation without adversely affecting our operating funds or extending that repayment schedule out further. So tonight, I'm asking the board to consider forgiving at least all, or at least 50% of the loan provided to us. And in return, we would formally donate the current ladder truck to Concord Volunteer Fire Department, ensuring that it's going to remain in service within reach of Appomattox County. This is not something that's just easing a financial burden. This Concord Volunteer Fire Department covers a significant portion in Appomattox County in their first duty response area. Providing them with an aerial apparatus, which they currently do not have, could lead to improved ISO rating in their region, potentially lowering homeowners' insurance costs for that area, but overall strengthening the county's fire suppression capacity. Furthermore, this truck would be prioritized for use in Appomattox County. Concord Fire Department has agreed to staff it for second duty response to all commercial fires in Appomattox, support technical rescue missions and swift water rescue incidents, and participate in joint training exercises. It would also serve as a valuable backup to Appomattox VFD in the event that our truck is going through maintenance or out of service for any reason, or if they need to come in and backfill our station. Having two aerial devices in the county enhances firefighter safety, particularly on commercial fires when a second means of egress or escape is important for our firefighters. Currently, we rely on Lynchburg Fire Department or Farmville Fire Department. And Lynchburg is not always available because they have a city that they're obligated to. And Farmville, their truck is currently out of service, I believe. But by keeping this apparatus within the reach of our county, we strengthen our local interoperability, support critical infrastructure protection, and ensure a more robust emergency response across all of Appomattox. Most importantly, this option requires no impact on the upcoming budget cycle. If necessary, we are prepared to make the annual payment of the loan by December of this year. We fully understand the gravity of this request. We don't take it lightly and we humbly respect whatever decision that you all make here tonight. We do believe this path offers the most benefit to the county, both in the short and long term. And it allows our department to focus on other capital needs while maximizing resources that are already in our possession. Thank you again for your time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
But first of all, Mr. Chairman? First of all, I'd like to thank all the volunteers for what you all do. And I don't want you to ever feel like you, when you all coming here, like you, you need to tell us what you need.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's what you're doing. I thank all of you all for the service that you all render to the county. And we don't hold you all responsible if nobody wants to buy that truck. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carter?
I'm going to feed it off Reverend Jones. But we are mighty fortunate in our community or in our county to have you all, the volunteers, be on our side to come out and protect us all hours of the day and night. That's a safety, that's a safety blessing. It really is. And I know all the, all the training that you all have to go through with. And in doing that, you're leaving your families. You're leaving a lot of things undone that you want to have done. But you all have made such an impact on this county throughout the years that I think every citizen of this county, I don't see how anyone could possibly say that you all do not do the job to acquire this. So it's no problem on my part.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I would, third, what they say is we are very fortunate to have you guys and what you do. It's a rare, getting more rare to find individuals like you have on the App Magnics Fire Department and our rescue service.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I understand you to say that the insurance rates could drop for some of our citizens?
Yes, sir, it has that potential. They would have to go through a reevaluation through ISO. I believe, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think Concord is going through some of that right now. So it would be in addition to that, which, so it's basically kind of like the lower the score in golf, if you will. So it will improve their points overall as a station, which thus reduces the score. So basically, from a 1 to 10 scale, if we're at a 5, it could go to a 4. Or if they're at a 4, it could go to a 3 potentially. So the lower the number, the better the homeowners' insurance ratings.
Right, so in that part of the count?
Yes, sir. So it's typically works within five air miles from the station, I believe.
Thank you.
And so Concord's first duty comes down to Reedy Springs Road in Appomattox County. And then their second duty, it's basically, so we have an automatic aid agreement with all of the surrounding counties. But basically, if you cut the county in half, from the middle school back west is what the area that they would support. So it's quite a bit of critical infrastructure and commercial buildings in that section of the county.
Well, thank you. Fire Chief, you've given us a lot to think about here.
Yes, sir, I understand the gravity of it, but I'm grateful for your consideration.
In fact, if you could share your written speech, that would be helpful to.
Yes, sir.
Sit and read it down.
Yes, sir.
Analyze it.
Yes, sir, I'll do that.
Any other actions from the board? All right. Hearing no other actions from the board, next move on to Sheriff Robbie Richardson, requests to appear before the board to discuss a JAG grant? Okay, are we joining with the Navy or the military?
No. Only if they're going to give us some money, I guess.
So before I get started with the grant, I just want to go over a few things. I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, have seen the press release we put out last week on the drug indictments of the people that we rounded up and arrested. I just want to go over some of that and let you know where your money's going with the people that you've hired for the sheriff's office and that the citizens have elected me for. Seventeen people were arrested for the following drug crimes. There were seven indictments for possession of methamphetamine, one indictment for possession of heroin, one indictment for possession of cocaine, three possession with intent to distribute methamphetamine, one possession with intent to distribute heroin, one possession with intent to distribute fentanyl, five indictments for distribution of meth, three indictments for distribution of fentanyl, two warrants for possession with intent to distribute meth with a gun, and one warrant for possession with intent to distribute fentanyl with a gun. That doesn't include any of the drugs we got off the people when we arrested them. They will come at a later date when we do get warrants or indictment for those charges. So it's 17 drug users and dealers off our streets that were here in the county of Appomattox. On top of that, we arrested four people for violent crimes. There's four indictments for sexual assaults of a victim under the age of 13, one indictment of a sexual offense on a victim that was under the age of 15, one indictment for sedative by force of a helpless victim, two indictments for object sexual penetration by force of a helpless victim, one indictment for rape, one indictment for indecent liberties of a child under the age of 15, and three warrants for indecent liberties for a child under the 15. That's all happened within the last few months in this county. So we're working diligently to make sure we get this stuff off the streets. As fast as we can do it, it happened again tomorrow and the next day. So that's why we come to you and ask for more people and ask for more money to make sure these streets are safe for all the citizens of the county. sure these streets are safe for all the citizens of the county. So getting all the bad stuff out of the way. The next topic is the grant, what I came here for. What this is, is JAG grant. We apply for it every year. It's a match grant, so the county would have to agree to match 25% of this grant. What I passed out to you is what we're going to purchase with this grant. Just for transparency, I think I gave one of y'all with my notes on it. But it's got taxes on it, so you can just discard the tax. The first one, you got it. So don't worry about the tax on it, but the final price would be $68,663. And what this is going to purchase is all the MDTs, update the MDTs in their cars and mobile data terminals, and it's also going to update the computers that we have within our office. We're still working on their Windows 10, which is unfortunately not going to have any more maintenance to be able to fix. So we're way behind time right now. We need to catch up. We found a grant to pay for this stuff, so it saved the county some money. This grant is only if we're awarded all this money. We're in hopes that we will be. So what I'm here to do is, for one, I have to validate the county is going to match it, so if we're not, I need to pull the application so somebody else has the opportunity to get the money that we may get. So the 25% match will be $17,165.75. That's how much the county would be liable for if we were awarded the full amount of the grant. So that could be anywhere from $17,165 or lower if we were awarded this grant. But whatever we are awarded is going to go towards these computers. My grant guy has already talked with ACE. ACE has been band-aiding these MDTs we have now for a long time, so they're dearly needed to be updated. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? So Ms. Adams, I would understand we would need a motion to authorize this matching tonight or at some point down the road.
You would commit to it as well, because I think it's a July grant.
That's correct.
It's going to be the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Yeah, it wouldn't go until effect till July 1.
Mr. Chairman. Reverend Jones.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Reverend Jones has made the motion that we agree to matching funds for this grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter, seconded. Any other discussion? Ms. Adams, one question.
Yes, sir.
Should we add to that motion not to exceed like 18K or just leave it like it is open?
I would put a dollar amount, so the $17,165.57 is the total amount if it's awarded at 100%, so up to that amount would be fine.
Okay, Reverend Jones, would you accept amendment to your motion that it not exceed the $17,100 and whatever it is figure that county administrator?
$17,165.75.
All righty, thank you. Mr. Carter, you agree to that too?
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the amendment to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. All right, the amendment's passed. All right, for the motion with amendment to set money aside for matching for this grant, Mr. Willskill.
Aye.
Mr. Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Uh-uh.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
I vote aye also. So your matching funds have been approved, Sheriff.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all's support.
We appreciate what you do on the streets. All right, next up is Mr. Jeff Shepherd. Maintenance supervisor is requested to appear before the board to provide an update on roof repairs at the county administration office, sheriff's department, and health department.
Good evening, gentlemen. Let me hand you that right here.
Thank you.
Looks like a UFO, Jeff.
Thank you.
Guess what it is?
Back in July of '22, we reached out to the Garland Company to come down and do a review of all the county roofs that we had, and they set forth documentation of a three-year plan, a five-year plan, going on after like a seven-year plan. Back in early February, we went up and did all the filter changes in the admin office, and everything was looking good. Back in, about three weeks ago, we went back up on the roof, changed filters again, and you'll see how the primary layer of the roof has started to strip. There is a secondary layer underneath this, but once we're through that, we're back down to, you know, your insulation and your steel. I reached back out to Garland, and they come back out and have done a survey of admin roof, the health department roof, and of course, the sheriff's office. And all the information is due back tomorrow or Wednesday. On the admin roof, what we're looking to do is do a relay over top of this roof right now that we have. All the understructure is fine. They'd come back in, they're going to lay another layer of insulation. We do a rubber roof, bring the rubber roof up and over the side of the building and cap our cornerstone with like a bronze aluminum cap, so that we have no valleys, no seams along these edges, what you see now. Looked to try to do like a building, the worst building that's right now is our admin office. The health department roof, it had some repairs done. It's holding good right now. And then the sheriff's office roof, I'm anxious to see what they come back as far as that roof, as far as. The rubber roof is fine on the older part of the jail, where the jail cells were, but the insulation has come undone from the metal decking, which means that section in there we need to take off, repair, and put back on. That'll be as the later date as we progress on through roof repairs. We're anxious to see what they come back as from this study we have now until today, which this was in '22, you know, we're looking at going into summer of '25. The heat's hurting us, and the cold weather had hurt this winter, so with any moisture underneath the roofing, as the roof expands with the freezing of the insulation, things stretch back and forth, and they're thick, and that's where this separation has come from. We had an area at the health department repaired over the winter, and we had a little small area up in the courthouse roof, we had some seams repaired over the winter. But I was just letting everybody know that's where we're starting to see where we're going to start going to as far as repairs to some of these roofs and stuff. On a lighter note, we have some good information as Dominion has reached out to one of my contractors, and as far as government buildings, right now, they got a program where all the incandescent bulbs, fluorescent bulbs in all of our buildings, they'll come in and repair for free and replace everything for free, and it's all going to go to LED. I reached out to them to put us in the program and wait for them to come back. They'll send somebody out, they'll count out every bulb, every fixture in the countywide buildings, they'll set up a date, and they'll come in and replace it all for free. So that's one good thing coming about. And then, I don't know if you've ever been out to the park lately, we put another trail in from the lower soccer field parking lot into the new restroom. There's another trail that's going to be going around throughout the Frisbee Golf type of ordeal out through there. But the weather is hindering us a little bit as far as getting the bathroom open out the park. We got to dress it with some topsoil, build a little bit of a walkway. They put a lot of grass seed out there around the park. There's been a lot of stonework done at the park and trying to get everything ready for the baseball season and the soccer fields, for the soccer fields, so. Other than that, my biggest concern right now is the roofs, especially the admin roof. That's the worst one I have right now. Other than that, if y'all have any questions.
Mr. Willskill.
That'll be handled here in a few minutes. That'll be addressed, Ms. Adams, she'll have that for you. I'm sharing a wealth tonight because my throat ain't too good. Other than that, any questions from y'all?
So once you get back an estimate from the.
Yeah, I'm going to email y'all everything that I find out either day or Wednesday. Y'all have it coming through an email, and it's not going to be as extravagant as I thought as far as when I was talking to the gentleman, what they can do out there for us. The roof, like I said, everything under the rubber's fine, and they just want to put an overlay over top of it and give us another 15, 20 years out of the building on the rooftop.
Well, if we want, we're glad you're keeping on top of this stuff.
It's a team, it's just not me. It's the other three gentlemen that we got to climb up and down and climb around the buildings with, but we're doing it.
Any other questions for Ms. Shepherd? Mr. Carter?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, the county administrator's office is worse than the sheriff's department's too, is that?
Well, it's, that would, that would, that would come in sections. I mean, if you look at the sheriff's roof, it has some shingle damage. I mean, it needs to be reshingled. The ten, the standing seam needs to be repainted, and then the flat roof again is, the rubber's fine, it's where the insulation has come off from the decking. So we can go in one section, eliminate that one section, and relay that. I'm anxious to see how they want to respond to the roofs. I thought I was going to have this information before this evening, but I don't, I don't have it right now.
The thing I guess I'm more concerned about, other than what's listed here, is the ball field, because they getting ready to start.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know how much.
Ball field's in pretty good shape. They're pretty happy out there. I haven't had any complaints. My man Willie and his partner, they're out there pretty much every day taking care of fields, mowing, weeding. I mean, it's, that's, that's their life out there right now. And then as far as any of the coaches, I haven't had any response from nobody yet.
Well, thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Appreciate your update.
I'll get back with you.
All right, next, solid waste disposal study date. Solid waste disposal study update. Mr. O'Rourke, you have some news for us?
I'm not sure if I got a lot of good news. You guys have this chart in your packet if you need me to hand it out. Just let me know, but I think you've all got it. It's a new option summary that after last month, you received the full study from McGill Associates on the future planning for the solid waste, and you got a lot of information. Some of the feedback from that was that you'd like some of that information simplified for you. So the McGill folks went back and put it a little bit more concise for you, and they pulled out the hauling and disposal cost, and that's in your first column, the capital cost in the second, and then, of course, the third one is just the total of those two columns. Hauling and disposal basically, you know, remains what we do, you know, what we're doing now, except the end destination would change throughout the different scenarios, so that's where those differentiations and those costs come from. When you get to the capital cost, you need to keep in mind when you look at those numbers, there's two things in that column that you need to kind of keep in your mind as you look at that. That incorporates, if you remember, McGill talked about upgrades to the convenience centers. Then that, there's about $875,000 in that number for each one of those scenarios. It's upgrades to the convenience centers that they had put into the planning study. So in your mind, you can do some math and either, you know, keep that in, take that out, or whatever, and that'll work with that. There's also a factor in that number for the financial assurance for our obligations for closure and post-closure on the current, the existing closed landfill in Appomattox, the closed landfill under the region up at Concord Turnpike, and the soon-to-be closed landfill at Livestock Road. So we, that's factored in over a 20-year period, so that's factored into that capital cost as well, because that's an obligation that you have for a capital expense that you've had. The numbers changed dramatically, actually. They came way down when you take out, they took out operations and maintenance, sour and benefits, so they took that out, and that brought these numbers down, but the rankings really didn't change as far as your options, what they look like. So the order of your options and what those options look like kind of remained the same, just what those numbers were changed a little bit and are a little bit more understandable for us. If you have any questions, I'll do my best.
Any questions from the board? Looks like you just giving us more thought for the.
Giving you more thoughts. You all received the full study last month, and in the study, it does tell you under each one of those options, it does kind of give you a general idea, general timeline of, hey, you need to get started here to be ready by 2029. Mr. Jones, you have a copy of the study from last month. So, you know, some of the, the more intensive options, such as, you know, opening up cells at our, our landfill, we need to make decisions earlier. You know, if you go with the haul direct, you know, that, that's a decision that can come a little bit later. You know, so, you know, it just depends if there's capital construction, if we decide to build our own transfer station, which is one of the options there, you know, that takes several years of planning and design, and then another, say, 12 to 18 months of construction. So you kind of got to back those up because you're looking at a, about mid-2029 when the regional landfill will go away. So you need to be prepared for the next step to go for from there, because in the study, the study for every one of these options says we're going to continue to do what we're doing today through the life of the regional tran, landfill. So we'll continue hauling our trash there through the life of that landfill, and then these are, you know, we'd have to figure out what our next step is going to be. One thing you need to keep in mind, too, that's in, that's in these numbers, in your capital cost, when we go away from the regional landfill, we'll have to do what's called a solid waste management plan for ourselves, and that's a planning document the DEQ requires you to have. That's a cost that is in all of these numbers, but that's also a document that takes time. So, you know, that'll be something that, you know, will be coming back to you before that 2029 horizon and get going on that as well. So something to think about, something that you want.
All righty.
All right.
All right, next up, public hearing. Public hearing amendment to chapter 3.2 elections pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-1427 and 24.2-26. Appomattox County Board of Supervisors has scheduled a dual public hearing to receive public comment and input regarding proposed ordinance to amend Appomattox County Code Chapter 3, Article 2, elections, specifically amend section 3.2-12D to consolidate the voting precincts and polling places in the Piney Mountain District into one precinct with a polling location at the Oakville Ruhrton Building, 181 Piney Mountain Road, Appomattox, Virginia, and eliminating the AG precinct and polling location, the Appomattox County Board of Electoral Board has recommended the change. County has prepared the amended code section for us to consider after receiving public Who has signed up to speak at the public hearing on amendment to chapter 3-2 elections? Anyone?
No one signed up.
All righty. Since no one has gone up to speak, I've talked to the county attorney, he says we don't need to do anything tonight because we haven't heard back from the attorney general yet.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. I sent in the request for a certificate of no objection to the attorney general's office back in March 21st. The statute provides that the attorney general's office has 60 days to get back with us with a response if there is an objection. If there is no objection, the attorney general's office can either simply not respond at all, and that is assumed to be approval, or that there is no, there is no objection. So I would recommend that we table any action on this until your next meeting next month to give the attorney general's office an opportunity to properly respond within the 60 days.
Thank you. Is there a motion to table until next month?
Sure.
All right, Mr. Willskill made a motion to table action until next month.
Second.
Mr. Carter, second. Any further discussion? Mr. Willskill.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Uh-uh.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
I vote aye also. The discussion on the change amendment to chapter 3-2 elections.
I vote aye also. The, uh, discussion on the change amendment to chapter three dash two elections will be on the agenda for next month. All right, next, action items. Scheduled public hearing R-two-two-five-oh-one-seven-four Ideal Design Services Inc., Ideal Design Services, uh, the property owner and Clark Campbell, the applicant, have requested to conditionally rezone property located at one-one-seven-nine-nine Richmond. I skipped one?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, public hearing on proposed budget. Thank you, Mr. Wolfkill. All righty, next up, public hearing on proposed FY twenty-twenty-six budget. A duly advertised public hearing has been scheduled to receive comments on a proposed FY twenty-twenty-six county slash school budget in the amount of fifty-eight million, one-hundred-and-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. Is there anyone here to talk about the school budget? All right, hearing no public comment about the FY twenty-six school budget, then on a special call meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, at six-thirty, or excuse me, at six P.M. to consider approval of the FY twenty-twenty-six county slash school budget. All right, action items. Schedule a public hearing on R-two-two-five-oh-one-seven-four Ideal Design Services. Ideal Design Services Inc., property owner and Clark Campbell, applicant, requested to conditionally rezone the property located at one-one-seven-nine-nine Richmond Highway Route four-sixty near the intersection of Heritage Trail from A-one agricultural zoning to conditional M-one industrial zoning for the purposes of operating a contract, contractor yard for their construction business and dumpster service. The property is identified on the tax map seventy-seven A-one-nineteen and totals three-point-six-five-two acres in size. Planning commission held a public hearing earlier this month where four citizens spoke to support of the petition. The planning commission voted unanimously to record, or excuse me, to recommend accepting the proffer statement and for approval of the rezoning request. The board will need to hold a public hearing prior to consideration of the planning, planning commission regulation. Is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for May nineteenth at six o'clock?
So moved.
Mr. Carter's moved to schedule a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hips is seconded. Discussion. All right, Mr. Wolfkill. Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
I vote aye also. The public hearing is scheduled for May nineteenth at six o'clock for the request for rezoning by Ideal Design Services Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I'll...
Mr. Carter.
I'd have a better three-minute break.
Does that take a motion?
No.
No? Sure, let's take a three-minute break.
Sunday, I went down to North Carolina. It was my father's ninety-third birthday. Ninety-three. Can't believe, of course, he took the opportunity to remind me that his grandfather and his father both died at ninety-four, so he's only got one year left.
I was like, Dad, ask the Lord. Don't say stuff like that. I was like, if nothing else, think of it as if you can beat him and get it to ninety-five, there you go. Yeah, right.
Really, what does that mean, Reverend? Who actually died three times in ten years?
He died.
Neat.
He's giving three reservations.
Took my heart out, what, and put it back in, you know? Does that mean God don't want you? What does that mean?
It just means that you're a walking man. God has a plan for you.
Or he don't want me?
No. Which, he left you here. What's that? He left you here.
Yeah, 'cause he don't want me up there.
Carter's got sixty more seconds.
Makes you wonder, don't you?
Yeah, what's going on?
Yeah, he could've walked out, that's true.
All righty, we're reconvened. Next up is resolution street acceptance for Woodchase subdivision. The subdivision streets in Woodchase subdivision located just west of the town of Appomattox off Pumping Station Road are ready to be accepted into the state secondary road system. Somerset Drive, State Route number seven-five-six, is zero-point-two-three miles in length, while Arbor Court, State Road seven-five-seven, is zero-point-zero-seven miles in length. Woodchase subdivision is a twenty-two-lot subdivision created in two thousand and eight. There are currently ten dwellings located in the subdivision. VDOT has prepared the resolution requesting acceptance. Staff recommends considering adopting the attached resolution requesting VDOT add these two streets to the secondary road system as presented. Is there a motion on the resolution? Mr. Carter, Mr. Carter has moved that we adopt the resolution requesting VDOT add the streets to the secondary road sec, system. Is there a second?
Second.
Reverend Jones is seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. Mr. Wolfkill.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter.
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
I vote aye also. The resolution presented by VDOT requesting that VDOT add the two streets to the secondary road system has been approved. Next is Department of Social Services. Please transfer by consent ten thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents from the general fund and appropriate it to fifty-three-oh-one dash three thousand nine Management Consulting. At the November eighteenth twenty-five meeting, the board approved, the county administrator executed a consulting contract for interim director services for the Department of Social Services not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Staff recommends approval. No local funds are required.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Reverend Jones has made the motion to appropriate the funds. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wolfkill is seconded. Discussion. All righty, Mr. Wolfkill.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Carter. Mr. Hips.
Aye.
I vote aye also. The appropriation of ten thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents from the general fund to fifty-three-oh-one dash three-zero-zero-nine Managed Consulting is approved. Next up is Sheriff's Department. Please transfer by consent one-hundred-and-six-thousand, nine-oh-six dollars and eighty cents from the general fund and appropriate to thirty-one-oh-two dash seven-oh-oh-one Equipment. Referenced the purchasing of body worn cameras approved by the board in the January twenty-first meeting. No new local funds requested. Is there a motion to approve the transfer?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Wolfkill has moved to approve the transfer. Is there a second?
Second.
Reverend Jones is seconded. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carter.
Did Commonwealth Attorney say that he was going to have somebody or needs to hire somebody to read the, read these films? You know, some, some time ago, when, I, I'm not talking for long, huh? Two, three years. Oh, Commonwealth Attorney hired a part-time person to do this. And it is, it was something by code, I think, that it was mandated. So I wonder now, is that still in effect? And I don't know, Mark, is that what we're gonna have to do?
Um, my understanding is that because of the amount of work that goes into reviewing those videos, that almost every Commonwealth Attorney's Office has hired additional personnel to do that job. Um, it really has taken on a life of its own.
And it seems like, I remember Les mentioning that when he brought in his budget request.
Um, may I comment on that?
Yes.
Last year, she, they had a part-time person, and you made that a full-time position last year to accommodate the body cam reviewing.
I thought we did. All righty, Mr. Carter, how do you vote on the transfer of funds? Hips. Reverend Jones. Mr. Wolfkill.
Aye.
I vote aye also. So please transfer one-hundred-and-six-thousand, nine-oh-six and eighty cents from the general fund to and appropriate to thirty-one-oh-two dash seven-thousand-one Equipment. Committee appointments. Piedmont Community Criminal Justice Board. Mr. Donald Williams, Director of the Piedmont Court Services, have been, has notified staff of a vacancy on the Piedmont Community Criminal Justice Board of Atmex County due to Judge Puckett's resignation. Did he get your approval, Ms. Adams, to do that? All right, Mr. Williams is requesting the board's consideration to appoint Mr. Les Fleet, Commonwealth Attorney, to fill the vacated position by Judge Puckett. The other Atmex County position is currently filled by Sheriff Richardson. Staff recommends that we appoint Mr. Les Fleet, Commonwealth Attorney, to fill the vacated position of Judge Puckett on the Piedmont Community Criminal Justice Board. Mr. Carter has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wolfkill is seconded. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. Mr. Carter. Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfkill.
Aye.
I vote, vote aye also. So, Ms. Adams, you can... Advise Mr. Fleet, he's been appointed. Consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriation, light items, targets, excuse me, transfers and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of board member prior to the vote on a consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually in order of which they are removed from the consent agenda immediately following the consideration of consent agenda. Any changes, additions to the consent agenda? Questions? Mr. Carter.
I'd like to comment on number twenty-five. Say that money is well spent.
Amen to that. No phone calls yet.
I'd like to, just for humor's sake, Robin and I have done the two-and-a-half-mile stretch. We actually adopted a highway in front of our house for fifteen years, and we just, we're just doing it. We just said, tonight, we're gonna do it again Thursday. It's funny that that's on here.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted? Mr. Wolfkill's moved to accept the consent agenda, or approve the consent agenda as written. Is there a second? Mr. Hips is seconded. Any more discussion? It was Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
All righty, motion that made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Wolfkill.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
Mr. Carter. I vote aye also.
Boy, all the fun starts after the TV station leaves.
All right, attorneys report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I am in the process of drafting up a second amendment to the deed of lease that we have with the Central Virginia Community College. Um, it would expand their footprint in this building, um, to provide, uh, additional space. Um, I think you, earlier this evening, you heard, um, discussion of, uh, grant funds that were used to purchase some equipment for CVCC. Um, and so that is being drafted up. We're putting our finishing touches on it. Uh, the county administrator and I have been in discussions with, um, CVCC on this issue. Um, and so as of tonight, I would request that you authorize the county administrator to execute that second amendment once it is in final form and approved by me.
All righty. Mr. Wolfkill's made the motion that county administrator enter into the amendment as put forth by the county attorney. Is there a second?
Second.
Reverend Jones is seconded. Discussion. I've read it. It's well-written, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Carter, how do you vote? Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfkill.
I vote aye also. And that will solve some problems.
All right, administrators report.
You have the report before you. Um, basically, we've reported on the Animal Control Department, building inspection, and community development. So there's a lot of data about those departments, as well as public safety, which includes the fire departments, the emergency communication center, sheriff's department calls, and animal control. Um, so after tonight's public hearing, the board will convene in a special call meeting on April thirtieth to vote on the budget as well as set the tax levies. So I had sent out an email earlier about the tax levies, and we included in that the data center, um, tax for advertisement purposes. But if there needs to be any discussion before you vote next week, would be the appropriate time to do that. Otherwise, you would be setting those tax levies as advertised. The county notices now, as you know, the Times-Virginian closed in February, so we are, have to have a paper record where we post our notices. So staff called around and, and we received pricing. We found out that the Farmville Herald is fifty percent cheaper than the Lynchburg. So currently, be, because we had several public hearings to advertise, we are advertising in the Farmville Herald. But I'd like to know if the board would like to continue to do so, and we'll publicize it accordingly. That's where all of our public notices will be posted.
Yes, yeah, Ms. Adams.
Yes, sir.
Most people in Appomattox probably reading Lynchburg paper.
I'm not sure.
I would think.
Yeah.
So that might be something to think about.
What is the dollar amount difference?
Well, it's, it's almost fifty percent. The, the total way it was how much, Mr. O'Rourke, he put some notices in there.
Just for one of the ads that I do, uh, for a zoning ad, uh, Lynchburg was about six, little over six hundred dollars, and the Farmville Herald was, uh, under three hundred or right at three hundred.
Is that for twice a week?
Excuse me.
Was that twice a week, I think?
I'm sorry. Now, that's running at the two weeks, yes.
Okay.
But I think our issue is going to be, we're not gonna get the coverage there. I think it's gonna come back and be an issue for us, the public saying they didn't know anything about it. I mean, even if people get their news online, it's probably more Lynchburg and not Prince Edward County.
Right. We are trying to post on Facebook as well because that's something we haven't done in the past, but because we don't have a local paper, you know, that's the only other means to get it into the community.
Does it legally have to be in a paper or on Facebook and our, and our website, is that enough?
No, it does have to be in a newspaper. There is...
Is that the law?
Yes, sir. There has been many an effort over many years to try and not have to do it in the newspapers anymore, mainly because newspapers are becoming electronic more than actual papers. Um, so there has been requ, requests made at the General Assembly, legislation introduced that would have eliminated the need to actually publish it in a newspaper, but the newspaper lobby has fought successfully against that because obviously, that's a source of income for them.
And I just think it's gonna be a problem if we go to Farmville and not cover Lynchburg.
I don't know. I've tried to take the Lynchburg paper and, and subscribe and never get delivery, never get access to the website, so I've canceled my subscription and got refunded two or three times now. And I don't know, Farmville, that paper seems to, at least from my end of the county, and, and maybe Mr. Wolfkill's... and maybe Mr. Willskill's more interested in Abilene County than what I see Lynchburg paper as being.
That is true.
Well, my issue is that I just don't think the public has a fair opportunity going, taking the advertisement to Prince Edward County and not Lynchburg. And I don't think I'm being biased, 'cause I was born in Lynchburg. But I- I just don't- it just don't make sense.
On that basis, it seems that Prince Edward County people treat us more fair than Campbell County people treat us.
I don't know. I just think we have- I think it'll be an issue eventually if the public is saying, you know, I don't read the Farmville Herald. I mean, or should we tell the public that they need to look in Farmville? I don't know. It's just unfortunate we no longer have a newspaper here.
Well, you could've bought it.
Yeah, the-
It's a big blow.
The- the basic standard is a newspaper of general circulation. They do not define what general circulation means. So it's always been a struggle in more rural communities such as ours, especially when the local, local paper goes under. What- what is a newspaper of general circulation? I gotta believe that, you know, one end of the county probably is more inclined to look at Lynchburg versus the other side looking at Farmville. I don't know what the magic number is. I've never been able to quite ascertain or understand what general circulation really means from a legal perspective. I think it really does come down to, as you said, you know, the perception of the public. Are, you know, are- is someone gonna look at posting those notices in the Farmville Herald as somehow trying to hide something from the population? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, and I- and I- and I hear and agree with Mr. Jones, Reverend Jones, but I also look how many people come to our meetings. They're not coming.
Yeah.
They're not- they're not reading what's being posted now. The purpose of the ads that we're putting in either paper is really about fulfilling the legal obligation. The public's not reading them and coming. So while I agree with Reverend Jones, Lynchburg seems to be more apropos to the county than Farmville would, but they're not coming anyway. So.
Well, my feeling is-
Are we talking a thousand dollars a month saving?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's twelve thousand a year. And it is on the website. And if we can force Tippi to make sure it's on the on the on the, uh, Facebook page. I think we're close.
Well, I guess we need a motion one way or the other, so the- to advise the county administrator a Joe head nod or something, I don't know.
If we gotta make a motion, I make a motion, we use Farmville. If it's a thousand dollars a month, that's twelve thousand a year.
Okay, there's a- been motion I made to make the Farmville Herald the official paper of record. Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hips.
I don't wanna disparage any- either a newspaper, but I I think it probably is a half-and-half situation. You know, so I don't- I don't know that the- I see your point, but I don't know that the- I don't know that the Lynchburg paper's read any more than the other on that side of the county. I don't know if that, you know, as far as actual distribution of the paper, I don't even think Kroger has newspaper racks anymore. At least I didn't see them when I was in there last time. So I don't know, you know, does Walmart or whoever get Farmville's newspaper? I have no idea, but I understand what you're saying. I just don't know if there is a difference.
Yeah, and I think for me, it just comes down to perception. I think Lynchburg paper's read a lot more frequently for those people who still read papers. I don't know. You know, and I realize the money is gonna be saved, but I think it's going to be an issue for the citizens to feel maybe, you know, y'all trying to hide something. I mean, that's just my feeling. I- I can't support it, 'cause I just don't- I just can't see us having important business to do and posting it in Farmville Herald.
Well, I kinda fall in with Mr. Willskill on the fact that, you know, when you base on our attendance.
You shut it up.
The way, you know, the local paper or the elements right here is, they weren't coming anyway. So I- I- my leaning is towards fiscal responsibility. But any other- any other discussion? If not, I'll call the question, 'cause it's gotta be cleared. Carter, what you got thinking?
Oh, brother. Only reason I took Lynchburg paper was read the bitewords.
And they just go to the fuel.
Who knew our greatest controversy would be over newspapers?
You may not wanna be doing that, Mr. Carter.
Alrighty, Mr. Willskill.
Aye.
Reverend Jones.
No.
Mr. Carter.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hips.
Aye.
I vote aye also. So the new paper record is the Farmville Herald.
If we get- if we get all sorts of complaints, then-
We can always change.
Go to the other one.
And I will say that Janet updates the Facebook as well as the county website page, so maybe we can direct people there also.
Yeah.
And the only other question about your report, Ms. Adams, I would have is, when is that new animal control guy coming up?
He's here.
He's here? Okay.
He's here. We have one officer in- at Basic Academy in Salem. And then we have the two gentlemen working in. The new animal control officer is required to go to Virginia certification, 'cause he was North Carolina certification. So he'll be attending in May. And we also have the Attorney General's Office coming in May to provide training. May the twelfth, I believe it is. There were a couple of other things I wanted to comment on. Jeff had promised that I would tell you about the social services renovation, and so I've got that on the note here. Let's see, where is that? Okay. So the renovation is underway at the previous Court Street location. All the HVAC equipment has been installed. The electrical has been completed. Walls and sheet rock are installed now, and they've been painted. Flooring is installed. And Jeff is working on finalizing the doors and the windows. So once that's done, he has to bring back the electrician to complete. We have- we're meeting with the interim director about the workstations and the furniture. And we have a projection, projected completion date of May the thirty-first.
Of what?
May thirty-first.
Cool. Twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-five. Okay, and tomorrow, we have a job fair scheduled at DSS. We're working with workforce development. I think Mr. Hinkle may have heard about that at some of his meetings. This was, uh, we had this conversation last October, and it really didn't materialize, so we revisited, and now it's being promoted. Most of the positions that are being advertised were vacant last October, so we hope to have a successful job there. We've received a lot of inquiries. And all the workers are back in the office five days a week. No more teleworking as of April the fourteenth. Courthouse construction, you can see in the notes what's been completed, what's being scheduled, but we still have a project- projection day of completion on July the third, the courthouse construction. And you sports complex did meet with the AYS baseball commissioner, Brian Ferguson, and he's excited about what's being done at the park. They gave us a needs list of things they would like to be done as well. And so the first thing was a new drag for the field. Now we're looking at scoreboards, so the drag's been purchased. The scoreboards, we're looking at sponsors to provide those. And we kinda have a priority list that we're working towards. We have some funds that are in reserve for that purpose. The Women of the World installed two benches at the flagpole. I'm not sure if you've been down to the sports complex, but they're nicely installed, but we're planning on putting a concrete pad around it so that we know some of the senior citizens like to sit back and watch the game, so we're trying to fix an area for them as well. So Jeff and his team, they're finally- they're finalizing the handicap ramp to the new bathroom. So they're up there every day. They're working, and I know that because Mr. Ferguson told me that. So he's very proud of what they're doing, the work that they're doing there. And I met with the town manager. We had three meetings. We've been talking about mostly water and sewer needs, and we are also planning a future meeting of the council and the board of supervisors. So reminder, after the budget, you vote on the budget on the thirtieth. Senator Seifers will be here to meet with the board. He says if you have any pending concerns or anything you'd like to talk about, he's gonna- he's here to listen.
Alrighty. Mr. Willskill, you have any supervisor concerns?
I do not.
Reverend Jones.
I just have a comment. One of my constituents saw me at Walmart, I think it was, and they were about to do their happy dance about the Dollar John.
That's right, yeah.
She was- she was so excited. So I just wanted to make that comment.
And he's- he's talking about at the Oakville site.
Yeah.
They start construction in here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Carter.
I just have one comment, Mr. Chairman, and that is, the library has really, really progressed well. I've had numerous people tell me that, and I have even had the chairman of the library boy tell me that.
Wonder where she is.
I don't know. But I am real happy to be there.
Hard to.
You know, I'd just like to add one thing about the library. I was in the library, and it's almost like they've outgrown the building. It was so busy, which is a good thing.
Mr. Hips. I have no concerns, but like to compliment our animal control for being on the job and handling things the way they have, so. Anything for a closed session? No closed session, right? Alrighty, upcoming meetings. Wednesday, April thirtieth at six o'clock, right here, is a special call meeting to approve the FY twenty-twenty-six budget. And then Monday, April nine- or May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at six o'clock, is our next regularly scheduled board of supervisors meeting. Mr. Carter.